Thank you. Turn my mic on so that the public can hear us and I'd like to call to order the special City of Brisbane City Council Special Meeting of Tuesday, October 27th, and if you'll join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. So I don't think we need to approve the agenda. This is a study special meeting and we have a presentation from the consultant on the Baylands survey results, and then we'll follow that with public comments. And I wanted to get a comment from the city manager on the format for this evening.
So as the mayor has indicated, this is a public workshop and as in all council agendas, there is something that's on the agenda and there's a number of things that aren't on the agenda, so you have to kind of stick to what's on the agenda. The survey results are the only thing that's really in play tonight in terms of your discussion and your debate and deliberation, so although that is obviously about projects or potential projects, that's really not the purpose of tonight's meeting, so if you can just keep your comments focused on the survey and answering questions or asking the consultant questions with regards to the survey, then I think will be good in terms of how tonight is structured.
Thank you.
We'll save you $700.
Or more, as the case may be, and depending on how late the evening goes. So I'd like to invite our consultant up.
Great.
From, and if you'd introduce yourself.
My name is Kurt Baillo from FM3 Research. We're a public opinion research firm that is, offices in Oakland and Los Angeles. We conducted the survey for you. Been working on this survey since actually the end of, end of last year. I'm proud and excited we all showed the results of the survey, and I think that once we wade through some of the stuff up front, when we get towards the end, there's some actually very interesting ways of slicing and dicing the data that I think came up with some pretty particularly interesting results. All right, so I'm going to walk through here and talk a few minutes about the methodology and spend the rest of the time going through the actual results and came up with some top line key findings at the beginning and there's some sort of conclusion observations at the end, so let's work our way through this. So, in terms of our methodology, we did a combination of mail survey and online survey. So everyone who was registered voter in the city was sent a mail survey and they could fill it out on their ledger and mail it back in, or they could go online and take that same survey. And everyone was assigned a unique code, so everyone could only take the survey once. And we had 580 people take the survey either online or on the phone, and the specifics here are shown in the slides. Frankly, it was a very high response, right? More than I would have anticipated. I think that the city did a lot of outreach effort in advance to get people to participate, publicize that the survey was happening over the course of a number of weeks, and I think that was pretty obvious in the high responses here. We're looking at the overall results here. Keep in mind roughly a margin of error with rounding of about 4%. And one note about this, because oftentimes we do telephone surveys that we don't publicize, we try to catch people not off guard, but we don't try to prep them in advance to get sort of a clean read on it. In this case, because we want to get as many people to participate as possible, the city engaged in some outreach, and this means that there's potential for a little bit of response bias in that the people who cared most about the Baylands, either had strong feelings, be anti or pro development or whatever it may be, may have been a little more likely to respond to the survey. I think that is endemic with any survey on any topic which you publicize in advance. I don't think that that really changes my impression of the results at all, but just want to plant that seed as it's something to keep in the back of your mind when looking at the results. So, in terms of the key findings here, and I'll talk about all these in more detail as we go through them here, people really like living here in the city. That was no surprise to anybody, I think, looking at the results, but there was basically a very high sense of the quality of life here in the city. The drought is the number one issue, it's the number one issue in every community we've been asking about in the last two years. You know, essentially we had a four-year run of the economy obviously being the biggest issue, and the drought has completely swamped that, and actually instantly with more intensity throughout the state. The Baylands itself, the future of it, what gets done with it, was clearly seen as a high priority issue, and I think we'll see a lot of pretty interesting responses in the survey about what future development could be done with the Baylands. There were some really interesting divisions up front in the survey. We structured it so we touched, before we got into the Baylands, we asked about development in general, the small town character. Have things been changing too fast, too slow? During the course of the changes, do they feel, do residents feel like the small town character, the values have been reflected? And they really did. It was quite interesting. There was a pretty hard, there wasn't a strong anti or pro development camp, people right around in the middle, and a general sense that the small town character has been maintained. And I think we'll see a couple of different slides on that. Not surprisingly, the Baylands itself and the potential development projects that have been proposed were fairly highly well-known, and in terms of priority goals, whatever gets done there, there was a high premium placed on environmental protections and natural area access. Those were really some of the top priorities, including also, you know, water quality, air quality, sort of lumping into there, and also a lot of concerns about the contamination that may have been left over from prior projects and uses in the past. I think the, obviously one of the critical issues here is how housing was viewed as a potential component of any sort of development project. And attitudes in the city were clearly mixed and nuanced in some different ways, and I think the survey helped tease out a little bit of those, and through some discussions with staff and your subcommittee here, I think that it wasn't entirely surprising that there is, it's a complex issue, and there isn't really a clear-cut, you know, yea or nay position on how housing could or could not be included in any project there. There are sort of a majority conceptual opposition to housing there, but when we asked the question slightly different about the actual number of houses that could be, residential units that could be put there, there was a little more openness to it. So you have this interesting situation where you've got, some people opposed to the concept of additional housing there, but open to it with the amount of housing there was sort of in the range of what they felt comfortable with. In any event, and we saw this in focus groups we conducted for your city last year, the number one concern about housing was the soil contamination there and whether or not it would be safe. And so that was the clear overriding concern about housing. However, a strong majority also thought that some sort of development that could help pay for remediation was highly desirable as well. So all these things paint a complex tapestry here of the opinions about the Baylands, and we'll get into them in more details here. So, first, some extraordinarily happy positive news. Ninety percent of the people we surveyed here feel like the Brisbane is a good or excellent place to live, so people really like living here. I think that doesn't come as any particular surprise to anyone here. And you've got a fairly engaged population. We asked a couple of different ways about how people may be engaged and involve themselves with goings-on in the city government here. Just about everybody says that they'd spend some time reading about city matters on a variety of different sources here, and roughly half of respondents, for the most part, said they have, you know, in the last year, met with city staff, or maybe yourselves on the council, attended a public meeting, or watched proceedings like we have going on right here. So a pretty engaged group of people here, and this is, you know, 580 residents here, so this is not an insignificant portion of the population who are answering in the affirmative. This is a pretty standard question that we ask in a lot of surveys, both statewide and in different localities. We ask a series of issues that may be facing a community, and ask respondents to indicate how serious of a problem they think that may be. And so we use extremely serious, very serious, somewhat not too serious, in this case, not at all serious. And so the dark red bars and the pink bars, a little hard to see the colors here, represent those who feel like one of these issues was extremely serious or very serious, and we summarize those on the right-hand side. So those are the intense feelings. These are strong pressing issues, and you'll clearly see, ah, that helps quite a bit, thank you, person behind the curtain. The number one issue here is the drought and reduced water supplies, clearly the biggest issue facing the community. So one of the reasons we asked this survey was both to get a gauge of other issues, maybe not even Bayland specific, but then see how issues that touch upon potential Baylands development may stack up with other concerns in the community here. And you'll see the number two item here, open space preservation enhancement. You have three out of five at 61% who indicated they think that that is an extremely very serious issue here in the community. Obviously, that goes directly to potential development in the Baylands, it's seen as a pretty pressing issue. Moving a little bit down the list here, you get down to economic issues, not quite seen as pressing, places to go shopping, crime, traffic congestion, particularly places to go shopping, jobs and traffic congestion, which could touch on some development issues, not seen as pressing issues as open space preservation, schools and water supplies. Another question we asked, but you know, we're basically starting off the big funnel here, sort of big picture issues and moving down to the Baylands itself, and then some specific potential elements of a development project that could, may or may not happen there, was, well, here are some issues that your city government could be taking some assertive, active steps in. How important is to you personally, your city government deal with these? And the scale we used here was importance, extremely important, which is the dark blue bars, very important, which is the sort of light blue steel color bars, somewhat in various shades of not important. And so we summarized the extremely very importance on the right-hand side, and those dark blue bars, you can see, we've ranked here, and you see, now this is, of course, a survey about the Baylands that was publicized well in advance, is a survey about the Baylands. So the number one issue that people who responded to the survey said what they want you to deal with is the Baylands. Not entirely surprising, potentially a little bit of response bias factoring in there, but in any event, it's still stacked up much higher than all these other items here, so clearly you've engaged populace and this is a big issue for them. I don't think I'm telling you anything that you didn't already know before the survey happened so far. But in terms of what may happen out there, maintaining Brisbane's small town character was seen as one of the most important things that you can deal with as a governing body and city management here. And I think this is one of the key items, I think, that you'll need to consider with any type of potential plans out there. Interesting, I think, given some of the conversations that we had earlier on in developing the survey and through the focus groups, was creating more retail shopping and dining options didn't rate as high as some of these other items on this list. Small town character and the various things that touched on environmental, open space issues ranked a little bit higher in terms of what people want to see your city priorities This is a two-slide series here, so moving further down the list, and now you start to see the extremely very important start to dip below 50%. So now those dark blue bars are getting pretty small. These items don't pack nearly the intensity as the prior ones. You'll see housing alternatives, recreational programs, potholes, issues like short-term residential rentals, replacing the old library, none of these things really generate a lot of intensity in terms of priorities that the response to the survey would like to see the city addressing. A part of this is probably because a lot of some of these things people don't see as really big problems. Potholes, street repair, it's not a top concern here, maybe a lot of people don't feel like there's a big concern they're to begin with. So now we get into some of the more interesting questions that I think get into where people's heads are and through which lens they are viewing the Baylands development project. So we presented a three-way choice here. Things are moving too fast, we're at risk of losing our small town character, things are going too slow, we need to be adapting to the future more quickly, or something in the middle that says, we've been maintaining Brisbane's small town character as we grow and change as a community. And you'll see virtually a little bell curve here with half of the respondents, 51%, falling in that middle category, right? They feel like you're doing a pretty good job, whatever's been happening in terms of change in the city has been able still to regain the small town character. And then the next category here would actually be a quarter, 26% feel like things should change maybe a little faster, and only about one in five at 19% feel like they're going too fast. So interesting split there, really right down the middle in terms of perceptions about how things have been changing. Again, you see a very similar kind of bell curve here when we ask about just generally the rate of development in the city. Two in five, 39% feel like it's about right, about, almost as many, just, you know, 38% feel like it's too slow, and then roughly a little more than half as much feel like it's too fast. So if you look at those two slides together in tandem, you've got kind of a pretty, either majority or plurality of respondents here who say things are going about right, and you feel like you're balancing change with maintaining important things and values, and maybe the, a little more people on the, we should be going a little bit faster camp than we're going too fast camp, although they're fairly well-balanced out. I kind of wish these were a little more one way or the other. It makes your decisions easier if everyone was anti-rate growth and development or very much pro, you're really split down the middle of these things, which is actually, it's kind of interesting to try to wrestle with. Now, let's get to the Baylands itself. So, we asked the question, how familiar are with the Baylands portion of the city? And a, you know, over 80, sorry, over 70% said that they were at least somewhat familiar. We looked at that little portion that said they were extremely or very familiar, so about two in five feel like they're extremely or very familiar with the Baylands. Very few people fall into the not at all familiar category, so people get the Baylands, it's obviously a very big physically, the geographical footprint of the area is always quite big, so it's not, and it's a very well-publicized area, it's not entirely surprising. Then we asked, have you heard anything about plans to do something with the Baylands? And just about everybody says, yes, I have. Now, when we get asked questions like this, we usually do some sort of intensity here, so if you heard something about Baylands development plans, yes or no, we ask a little bit more, like a great deal or a little. We tend to focus more on the great deals, and the little may mean they've heard, they haven't heard very much, or they, you know, kind of want to, just, you know, don't want to admit to me, have a little bit of ignorance about a particular topic. But either way, you've got this, again, this 39%, I've heard a great deal, read a great deal about Baylands development, which is very consistent, going back a slide here to those who say they're extremely or very familiar. So I think those two data points says you've got two in five voters here who are following this issue very, very closely. It is a very big portion of your voting population and the population overall. For those who said they've heard something, whether it be a great deal or a little, we asked them, write in your own words what you've heard. And we took this whole long list of different responses and tried to group them thematically together. Now, they could have provided a response that had multiple different categories in those, so these responses don't all add to 100, and we dropped off some of the smaller categories. But you'll see here that the number one issue that people heard about is, is the mixed, is mixed-use retail housing and also a few other housing issues here. So housing is clearly the one item that's sort of been sticking out in people's heads and minds about potential uses for the Baylands, also issues about open space, but kind of, you know, besides the housing, kind of a mixed bag of different things they've heard something about. Here's a few sample comments here, and I think this goes to show you've got a pretty informed electorate here. These are somewhat illustrative of some of the categories we saw there, some of the comments are just very to the point, I heard about it, you know, developed intermediate area with various different uses. Some were very specific about one of the major plans that's been put forth, about 4,400 housing units. Lots of these comments here about environmental issues and remediation issues, you'll see a couple of those here. So again, this goes to you've got a good 40% roughly who are very informed about this Now, we asked how important you feel the future of the Baylands is to the city and to yourself personally, and you'll see here that two-thirds of respondents said, 68%, that the, what happens to the Baylands is extremely or very important to the city. Fewer of those, 53% say that it's very extremely or very important to them personally. If you lumped in these somewhat importance there, it'd both be pretty high, and it's most of the respondents here, but that's why we try to look at those intensities. If you particularly look at those dark blue bars, those who feel like it is extremely important, 44% feel like it's extremely important to the city, but only 27% to themselves personally. So there's a sense that this is a big important issue, everyone sees that, there's a sense that maybe it's more important for the city as in the big picture than maybe for themselves personally, which I don't think is entirely surprising, but gives us a little, you know, insight into how people view the issue. In terms of how you as a city should proceed with considering development projects here, we had a force tour of, do you think that the city should work proactively with whoever may be proposing development plans? Or should you basically sit back, let the plans come to you and be arbiters of a thumbs up, thumbs down on the plan? And there was overwhelming support for being actively engaged here. 78% said they'd much rather have the city be engaged with any developers to make sure that the city's values are represented in what they may come up ultimately propose. So this is a very strong signal from respondents that being engaged is the way they prefer you to proceed. Now, we spent a little time in the survey, both the paper and the online version, giving some background information. Clearly, a lot of people already knew a lot about this given of the survey results, but we provided them a map and gave them a little background information, and I'll show, you know, you can read this at your leisure later on, but this is the exact text of what was in there. Talks a little bit about some of the proposals, the main proposal and what we're talking about here, and try to be very specific about the geographic area that we're discussing. And then I went through and said, well, here are some potential goals of what could happen here, and tell us which are the most important ones, and then let's get a little more specific and talk about specific land uses, and tell us which ones you'd support or oppose. So it gives us a view of how, what people aspire to happen there or not happen there from a goal point of view, and then maybe a little more specific about land uses themselves. So, the first two slides here in this series are about the goals. So the actual text of the question is in little fine print at the bottom here, but we said this is a list of goals for any future development. How important is each goal to you personally? So we didn't, we're asking people not to think about the big picture, but to themselves personally, and those dark blue bars are those who feel like this goal is extremely important, and these lighter steel color bars are very important, and we summarize those on the right. You'll notice as we look through these two slides that all of these goals are seen as at least somewhat important by fairly solid majorities. We focused on the intense, more intense reactions to try to draw some distinctions between them, and really there's a top three that generate the most intense reactions. All of them were seen as extremely important by at least three out of five respondents to the survey, and at least 86% overall saw them as extremely or very important, and they all address environmental issues, air quality, water quality, and environmental contaminant remediation. All those were seen as the top goals for whatever kind of development happens in the Baylands. Moving a little bit down the list here, we see wanting to make sure that traffic isn't an issue, preserving scenic views, and then also protecting taxpayers. There's clearly, you know, 77% feel like it's extremely or very important that whatever happens there doesn't result in additional tax burden to the residents who are already living here. Moving down the list a little bit more, we drew a line here trying to get the two-thirds mark roughly of intense reactions, but you'll see these, those next five items here, at least two-thirds of the respondents thought were extremely or very important. Again, some water issues here, open space issues, and a lot of sort of environmental concerns broadly speaking, but also these economic ones, generating enough revenue to pay for necessary infrastructure improvements and remediation, was seen as particularly important as well. And then moving down the list a little bit further, I'm sorry, this is actually, I think, a three-slide series here. Yes, I forgot, it is a three-slide series. So these are all items that were around, only half or more thought were extremely very important. Even the ones at the bottom there were still seen as at least somewhat important by majorities. This is where you get into recreational opportunities, historic buildings, opening to retail, actually, economic issues, providing housing, and connecting different parts of the city to the Baylands itself. Just one thing to note here, I know housing is something we spent a particular time focusing on the survey, although it was seen as one of the lower priorities comparatively speaking, you still have two-thirds who felt like it was at least somewhat important goal. Highlighting the fact that everything, nothing on here was, was roundly rejected as not a goal at all, there are just clearly different levels of opinion in terms of the intensity of importance. This slide, I'll skip past it, but this puts all those in the one slide, so you can look at it all at once, because of three slides, it's kind of a lot to look at, but you can see them ranked in terms of extremely very important all in one place. Next, so that's the goals. What can be done there in the bigger picture? Now let's get a little more granular here and talk about specific land uses. On this scale we used, do you support or oppose this particular land use or project? So the blue bars are those who supported a particular proposal or land use, and the shades of red were those who oppose it. And we summarize those on the right-hand side, and then we left the bars, the strongly and somewhat support here, or strongly and somewhat oppose, to give us a feel for the intensity with which they support or oppose a particular land use. And you'll see that the, you'll see that the top two items here, or top three items here, we're all seeing how it generated a lot of intensity here. Roughly half or more strongly supported that, preserving open space on my lands, bike lanes, building new parks. So environmental protection, open space protection, and access to that, in the bike lanes, trails, and parks, clearly seen as access points. Those are the types of land uses most strongly supported by respondents to the survey. Just a tick below there, you get into recreational facilities, renewable energy generation, and building transit hub. Again, pretty strongly supported there. You've got more than three, roughly three-quarters or more supporting each of those land uses. The intensity is just a tick below the general open space and access issues noted in the first three items. Now, this is the things toward, a little more towards the bottom of the list, we drew a line here, everything above that line was supported by at least a majority of respondents, and everything below that was, was not. And you'll see there, retail, tiny facilities for an R&amp;D, New Charter High School, public office space, all those things were still supported by a majority of respondents, but if you notice those dark blue bars are much, much smaller than, I'm going to skip back here to the slide where you're seeing up here, half respondents strongly supporting open- open space, parks. Back here, supported by a majority, but you're sort of in roughly a half as much in the intensity spectrum. When you go below that, you see items here that were, response were more ambivalent about or tended to oppose, expanding ecology, hotel conference center, multi-unit residential housing, and warehouse space. None of those were roundly rejected with the kind of intensity that we saw on prior slide, but clearly there is some conceptual opposition to some of these items here. And obviously, we'll spend some more time coming back to, in a moment, it's going to be this multi-unit residential housing. So again, this slide just sort of ranks everything by support that we saw on prior two slides in one place, makes it a little more digestible if you just want to get your quick snapshot. We did ask towards the end of the survey, what, you know, tell us what, if you were to talk to a friend, a neighbor, coworker, and have them, you know, what would you say to them that should be done with the Baylands? And people typed in or wrote down their own responses, and we aggregated those together into some different categories. And it was really interesting here, retail didn't pop up in any of the questions that we were asking, but in their own words, people threw that in there. Now that could have been a response to a fact that a lot of the other questions we had weren't really retail-focused, and they want to put it in there, or just that those who feel strongly, who want retail there feel particularly passionate about it compared to maybe some of the other land use options. But we still see the parks and open space there, and actually, housing is right in the third item there. None of these were mentioned by half of the respondents in their own words, but you do see a little bit of a pattern. Interestingly enough here, the nothing leave it alone camp, pretty, pretty small, 4% in their own words. We asked a couple of these forced choice questions, we touched on a few of them earlier on here, and this is another one that I think is interesting. We asked, you know, would it be better off to develop Baylands if that would help us finance a variety of community amenities? Or would we be better off as a city if the Baylands simply weren't developed, meaning that foregoes those funds for additional community amenities? So, you know, what kind, where do you land on this trade-off? Is it better off leaving it as it is? I know that means that we're missing out on maybe expanding some services we're providing or improving upon them, but I feel that, but only a quarter fell in that camp, and seven out of 10, 7.1% said they felt like they want to take advantage of this opportunity to do some level of development there. Now, the housing. So we spent, going to spend a few minutes digging into this a little bit deeper, and this is where I think there's a few interesting findings. So again, this is, we saw this question a few slides back, in that big battery of questions that talked about potential land uses. Pulling this out here just to remind us what it looked like, majority sort of said, I conceptually oppose, the phrase was building multi-unit residential housing. So you've got a majority, 55% said it's not something I support, and the intensity was much stronger on the opposition side than support side, roughly a 3:1 ratio in terms of intensity. However, we also asked in the survey, well, let's put this in the context a little bit. You've got 2,000 housing units in the city right now, UPC proposal is looking to essentially double that, 4,400 new housing units. The general plan would have to be amended to accommodate this. So would you support some level of housing? And if they said yes, we asked them to indicate, well, how much? We gave some categories here, sort of roughly in increments of a thousand. And it's interesting to see here that the percentage who said zero, 43%. You had 55% who opposed multi-unit residential housing, but only 43% when faced with some different options here said, I want zero. So you've got, clearly got some people who the concept of residential housing they're opposed to, but maybe it was okay when it was, well, I could deal with 500 or 700 or 1,000, whatever it may be. And it's really, you know, interesting, again, your folks are really split down the middle on these things. And this is where we combine some of these questions together. So bear with me for a second, I'll try to explain this. So, the first bar there says that 38% of your voters said, I oppose building multi-unit residential housing in the Baylands. And when asked how many units would be acceptable, they said zero. So they're pretty firmly opposed to any housing out there. I oppose the concept, and even one is too many. So that's roughly two out of four, two out of five voters. Almost the same amount here, 36% said that they supported the concept, multi-unit residential housing, yes, that's something I can support, and I support some number greater than one. So they have some level of support for some level of housing. Those are almost even numbers, they're 38 and 36%, kind of margin of error difference. And you've got this 14% here who said, I opposed, you know, multi-unit residential housing as a theory, but when given some options there, they selected something between, you know, one, something greater than zero. So there was a number of new housing units that they felt comfortable with, even though their first reaction was a little bit more of a knee-jerk, I am opposed to it, well, maybe something in the 500 category feels okay, or whatever it may be. And so again, this is where we saw a theme here, which was, how is your rate of development going in the city? A big chunk of people in the middle thinks about right, a few on either side saying too fast, too slow. Have changes been going on in the city that are able to maintain your character's values, your city's values and small-town character? Big chunk of people in the middle saying yes, and then some people kind of evenly distributed on each side, either concerned or feel like you should be going faster or going slower. And here, again, you have a kind of even split between those who are categorically opposed to any housing in the Baylands, those who are supportive of some level of housing, and then you've got this middle section here where they're a little on the fence. We asked this follow-up question for those who said, I don't want to see any housing. I said, so on this question back here, they said zero. This 43% said zero. Well, here's a question to follow. What's the first and second most important reason why you would not support any housing there? And it's the two items that really stuck out, soil contamination and ruining the small-town character of the city. The soil contamination really popped in the focus groups, that was no surprise, we've seen those concerns elsewhere in the survey, small-town character seems to be the next concern. Those were clearly the top reasons why for those who are categorically opposed to housing in the Baylands. We also asked a similar question of those who were said they were open to at least some level of housing out there, greater than zero. A little more of a mixed bag. There was, people think, hey, it'd be great to get some more housing that working families can afford, the Bay area in general has a housing shortage, we can get this thing next to jobs and transit, and then it might actually help the local economy. Not exactly an even split, but if you look at the first and second choices, it's really some combination of those four were seen as reasons to support putting housing in the Baylands. But some of the, having, some of the land can be made safe for residential use, not too many people saw that as a reason to do it. Generally, I feel like the responses were, maybe they can do the housing in spite of that concern. And here is another place where we've seen a number of questions where your responses were really extreme one way or another, or here's some more of the more split down the middle. Another forced choice, I prefer to see that development work within the general plan and oppose changing it, or I feel comfortable changing the general plan to accommodate things like housing. A little more on the, I don't want to change the general plan, then I'm okay changing the general plan, but frankly, kind of divided, divided universe there. And then on this question, which I think, you know, you'll have to pause to consider this over the course of the next week's months, we asked another forced choice question here in terms of how to deal with the contamination that's already out there and in the soil. And one choice was, hey, we should develop part of the Baylands, put those funds towards containment and remediation, or the best way to deal with it is to let it be and don't do anything out there. Only a quarter fell into the let it be camp, but two-thirds said that we should do some sort of development out there and put those monies towards containment and remediation. So, I've hit on a lot of these items in the conclusions here, but basically, this is a hot-button issue, and it's why you went to the effort to do the outreach that you have with all the different community meetings and the opinion research with our firm. So, there is a, there's a lot of strong opinions out there, and looking from the survey, there's a good two in five who've been following the issue very closely, have heard a great deal about it. Hot priorities, whatever camp you're in, are clearly open space preservation, making sure access is available to the area, and dealing with the environmental contamination. By and large, the voters here don't want you to be passive in the future of the Baylands. They want some engagement in the process. And housing issue clearly is, you may hear from supporters or opponents of this, and they may be quite vigorous from this survey, it suggests that your population is kind of split down the middle on this issue, and is a complex one for them to weigh and for you to consider yourselves. There's a lot of concern about putting housing on soil that's contaminated. There's also a feel that there, there is a sense that some level of housing is, can be made acceptable, but there, it's kind of a split, split in your population here. Anyway, I think I'll pause there, I think that was all I've got. So, I don't know whether you want to do public comment here or questions from the council
Do we have, does anyone have questions for the consultant on the report that he's given?
I, I don't, I don't have any questions for him, I'd rather hear from the public. I mean, it's...
Okay.
You know, I do have one question, Madam Mayor. And Kurt, it's the, it's the housing question in regards to no housing, and I'd like for you to just explain a little bit in more detail about the 43% that...
Yeah.
Is no, and then...
This one right here?
Yeah, and then the next slide goes to 38%, and so, why?
Yeah, so what it is, is that this slide right here combines this slide, so we take this 55% here who said, I oppose building multi-unit residential housing. And we overlay that with this 43% who said, you know, we asked, you know, how many housing units you feel is appropriate? And so the overlap between those two, if you draw like, you know, the Venn diagram, gives you this 38%. So just about everybody who was in this category that said...
There's no overlay there. You give a zero bar chart, that's not correlation.
Okay, so that's how we came up with the thing, that we do, we do, we created a group that said the people who answered, they opposed this and said that they were in this category, and that was 38% of the overall population.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm still not getting, just, sorry Kurt, I'm just...
Try, try again.
Yeah.
I don't think we got it. Okay. So, it would be as if three of you said into this question, I oppose housing, the three of you said you oppose it. We asked them subsequent question that said, well, how many housing units would you feel are appropriate to build there? Two of you said zero. So then we would say that the two of you fall into this category as saying you oppose housing in concept, and you said zero. Zero housing units there. So for both those questions, you fell into sort of an anti-housing category.
Okay. So we're not dealing with the 100% anymore now, we're in different categories?
Well, this, this is a, no, those are both, both these questions were asked of the entire universe. So it was, it was as if all five of you were asked this question here, do you support or oppose housing? Three of you said you oppose it, two of you said you support it.
Yeah, so and the 55% we have is the multi-housing question, then that other slide with the 43%, so it looks like then there's 12% that, but I guess it wouldn't be 12%. That would then be okay with other forms of housing, because 55 now...
Yeah, so the reason this does not add up to 100% is that not everyone answered both questions, right? And some people are in this refuse category down here, they refuse to answer it, they didn't answer it, whatever it may be, so they didn't fall, so are you trying to add these up and get to 100%?
So, we got 60, 74, 84. Okay, so yeah, so we're not at 100%?
Because some people didn't answer both.
Okay, and then that's why the percentage is the 38%?
Yes.
Okay, good, now that's...
Okay, that's okay, that's good, all right, yeah.
Because that's confusing, you know, for folks in the audience, and it was confusing for me too, so I'm glad that you explained that. Because, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that was, yeah, because not everyone answered all the questions.
So, so I did have a question about the survey itself and some issues that came up at the very beginning, and one of them that was the printing error, that the boxes didn't line up with the questions. Did you have any issues with people not following those directions?
No, we actually had no one check those boxes, those extra boxes, so...
Okay. And then there was some confusion, and maybe you'll explain the methodology, that it, the questions were asked somewhat backwards, where most people have an ascending order for a question, and our survey was done backwards? So, actually, when I went to fill out the survey, I was filling it on the wrong side of the spectrum until I went back and read the question. Was that done for a particular reason?
I, I don't know that, I don't really know how to respond to that. I, I think the way we do it was the way we traditionally do our written and online surveys, and we haven't had problems with that in the past, so...
Okay. And then the other question that I, I sort of had at the beginning was that our online and our paper copies weren't the same.
Yes, so we randomized the responses in the, in the, in the online version, because that's what we would prefer to have done in the real world, because you don't want to have a bias introduced by the order with which the items are presented. So in the online version, we took advantage of the fact that we could randomize the responses to a long list of different goals or different land uses. Obviously, in a paper survey, in, we stuck to a certain aura where we tried to mix up issues thematically, so they might not have lined up exactly the same.
And the reason I bring that up is originally I was doing it on paper until I realized I was doing it wrong because of the way the question was asked and what the responses were. And so then I ended up taking it online after I'd filled it out, and I think that some of those, because I had spoiled my ballot, so to speak, and I think that you don't think that that would skew any of the results if someone was trying to follow along on their paper ballot, their paper survey?
I don't know, I mean, we've, at this point, we conducted the survey, so I don't believe that it's problematic. The results seem to be pretty consistent there than we've heard before, so I feel comfortable with the results.
And do I have one question, Terry? So, you mentioned that the online survey was in different order, randomized, so when people got to the question about housing...
That was not randomized.
Okay.
Because there was actually a natural order to that.
So when they, if they answered yes or no, and then it says go to either question 15 or 16, were they able to see both 15 and 16 and go back to change their previous response if they wanted to?
No.
Because when I read it, it was like you had to read all three questions kind of together in order to answer.
If we had others, we would have not shown you all three of those. So in the online version, we did not, because we want to get that first gut reaction, yes or no, and then go and dig a little bit deeper. So in the online version, that was a little bit different there as well.
So you're saying that in the online version, you only saw the first question, yes or no, you answered it, and then it showed you the second question depending on how you answered it?
So for conditional questions, and we do telephone or online surveys, we only ask the first portion of the conditional question.
Okay.
And then we skip appropriately.
Okay.
So another example of that would have been, if you said zero, we asked a follow-up question about top two reasons why you'd want to, why you answered zero, or why you said more than one. In the online version, we wouldn't ask, we wouldn't show you both of these questions here, we'd only show you the questions that are appropriate to your prior answer.
And were voters online able to go back and review or edit previous answers?
No.
Even with the conditional question here with about housing?
Particularly with the conditional questions, because we wouldn't want, we want to get that first gut reaction to them.
Okay. And did all, were there any issues with the online survey? Were all the responses able to be...
Yeah, we only had a couple of, uh, single digits, I can't remember off the top of my head right now, who partially completed the survey, so they started taking it and terminated. Only a couple people did that. Forget the exact number, but it was a single-digit number.
Okay, thank you.
So, so one thing that I'd like to follow up on, so the people who took the online survey really took a different survey than the people who took the, with a different gut reaction than the people who took the paper survey and were able to read ahead and, and look at it and come back?
The, the, the modes are always going to be a little bit different, whether you do a telephone survey, an online survey, or a mail survey. By definition, the modes are a little bit different. The online survey is frankly the, are the preferred way we like to do a survey. It's very similar to how we do a telephone survey. So, they were a little bit different, and your experiences would be inherently different. You could sit and contemplate the mail survey for a number of days. You could, and the online survey, maybe you go through and you kind of run through it. So, they were slightly different. I don't feel that it anyway changes the results of the survey or the findings of the recommendations, unless you feel otherwise.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had one quick one.
Sure.
580 voters is roughly 25%?
Yeah, yeah.
About that. But what's the exact number of registered voters that we sent that out?
I have like 2,200 stuck in my head, but I'm not sure if that's exactly right.
All right, that's all.
And, and do we have a percentage of, of what the population, that reflects on the population?
Of the overall adult population in the city of Brisbane? I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I'm sure I could look that up afterwards.
Cliff, did you have...
Yeah, I have another question. Yeah. So, Kurt, one of the, the concerns in the community during the survey was the, the code, ID code. And so, you had mentioned that it was for preventing people to do multiple surveys.
Yep.
There was the other reason for doing it was that in case you didn't get enough people responding, that you might send it out to folks that hadn't turned in a survey? Is that another reason why?
Yeah, well, this is really a fantastic response, and I think your outreach efforts were, were great.
Okay. And then, the identification of the people who turned in the surveys, that has not been shown or will not be shown to anyone.
Yep.
It stays within your firm?
You do not know who those people were. We know, but the city does not know.
Okay, so that information is not being given to anyone on, or staff, or any of the members of the council?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, generated a couple of questions in my mind, a conversation. So, did you run a difference in response, if any, between the mail questionnaires and the online questionnaires? Did you do that?
Um, we could do that. We didn't look at it.
Because, I mean, the, the thought is that there's, there's a difference in the way people think when they do one or the other, at least that's what I hear you're saying. And it would be interesting to know if in fact there was a difference.
And, and how do you think that would impact the interpretation of the results?
Well, yeah, I don't know, but it would be interesting to know if there is a difference.
Happy to run separate top lines that compare, that poll just those for the mail and for the online. It's easy enough to do, happy to do that. We can do it this week.
Yeah, it, it might, you know, might show that there isn't that much difference, or there might be, so who knows? And if there is a difference, then we can sort of, you know, speculate as to, as to why. But the, the other thing that we talked about earlier in the subcommittee meeting was the idea that, that people didn't have an opportunity to, you know, have a record of what they had filled out, which is often the case, like when you vote, there's this, at, at the end, it says, "Okay, this is what you have decided, these are your votes." As you said, you can't go back and change unless there's an error of some kind. But people weren't able to either go back and change something, nor were they able to see whether or not it was actually filled out in the way that they wanted to fill it out. So, they couldn't really double-check. And you were wondering whether that might be something that, you know, we could do in, in subsequent online surveys. How do you feel about that now?
Um, if whoever's doing the survey for you in the future, I think they could design something like that, very much so. Yeah, this is not a very common, I've never done an online survey where we provided that as an opportunity. It's, I'm assuming it's doable, our vendors probably can do it.
So, would you have an objection to it, or is it the same thing? You want this, you know, spontaneous response, or what?
Uh, I, I don't have a categorical objection to it at this point.
Uh-huh. Okay, just curious about your sense of the, you know, the methodological differences.
Yeah, I think that is completely fine. I mean, generally speaking, we avoid telling people to print out the surveys they fill out as a default, just because we don't want the surveys, you know, here's what my, what I responded, here's how I filled it out, sort of floating around out there. But I, I don't have a problem with that in the future.
Uh-huh. Okay. Because the people who obviously filled them out in, with the mail survey, I mean, they're all, all around, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I think it, it would be interesting, just to see if there is a, is a difference.
Sure, we can, we can filter those top lines and certainly run two of them, and compare them.
And, you know, one, another possible difference is that, you know, a lot of the people who filled out the mail survey might not even have access to a computer, so, I mean, you're going to get a different, maybe, segment of the population, so, it's a possibility anyway. I don't know, but one could imagine that as a, as a, you know, possibility.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted to follow up on that. And, oh, I guess the other thing I wanted to say, and I think, I hope you would agree with this, is that, and this survey was to try to get the initial overview and, and the broad conceptual understanding of where people are at.
Yep.
It was not really digging into a lot of development specifics or plan specifics, and it could very well be that as we move along, you know, that we would want to get that kind of information from the public, and that would be potentially anyway, a subsequent survey, because that would have a different objective than this one did.
Yeah, this one was a bigger, higher-level gut reactions to the, to the project, work stacks up amongst other priorities the city has, feelings about development in general. You're right. And so, we intentionally threw the guidance with working with staff and with the subcommittee, steered away from getting too granular into specific project details.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think with that, we would want to open it up to public comment, and hear what the public has to say about this. So, I, I do have two slips, and I'm assuming there might be more people in the audience that want to speak on this, but the first slip I have is Barbara Evil.
Hi, Barbara Evil, 349 San Bruno. I haven't really had time to go over this in detail. I did not pick it up online fast enough, but I did want to come up with a few, I did come up with a few things I thought were important that we, I could highlight tonight. One, as I thought that the 72 to 79, I think I saw different numbers in different pages, support for the renewable energy generation is profound. I mean, when does Brisbane get that kind of consensus about anything? It's pretty amazing, really. And also, the issues that were deemed more important than that, a lot of them were amenity issues, and as important as amenities are to the quality of life, they are not structural to the Baylands. You know, they are, they're the, and sort of analogous to the icing on the cake, right? So, renewable energy got an amazing amount of support in this, I feel. So, and then also, I felt that the, I particularly didn't like the question, "Would you approve housing on the Baylands if it was safe?" Well, what's safe? You know, because unfortunately, I mean, what we define as safe, and what the regulatory system defines as safe, and what's going to really turn out to be safe, these are all different things. And I think when a lot of people think about remediation, they think about it really getting clean, like, you know, the toxins actually being removed and, and things being sealed. And that's not really the case for this landfill, because this was never a sanitary landfill with the rubber liner and the piping, and those always leak anyway. But there's really no way to contain this stuff with sea level rise, short of physically removing it, and that's not what's being proposed. So, I just think that that question in not, does not show that people think it's safe to have housing. I think it shows a big disconnect between people's perception of the regulatory environment and the actual regulatory environment. So, I would be very, very careful about extracting anything from that answer. That's my feeling. You would have to talk to other people, you would have to follow up in another survey or something about that, like what do they think remediation means, and what do they think safe means? And I think you get some, you'll get some really screwy things there, they're just... Another important thing I wanted to call up this, is that most people feel that the rate of growth in Brisbane right now is pretty good, right? Building the Baylands out is going to radically change the rate of growth, so in my mind, the survey is at cross purposes there, because it's like, well, if they want to maintain the rate of growth, then we can't really develop the Baylands in any sort of meaningful way. So, again, there's a cross purpose there that I think that the consultant didn't really highlight, because a lot of people said they do want to develop the Baylands well. Do you really want to develop it one building at a time, which would sort of be consistent with our current growth rate? Which, again, many people said are, are important. I was also really confused by the question importance of development, because I think that developing the Baylands is extremely important, but not unnecessarily in a positive way. We can make it a positive thing, but the development could also have a negative importance. And so, again, I feel that the question was very ambiguous, depending on how you read it. You could read it, is it important to do it in a positive manner, or is it important not to do it in a negative, you know? I didn't quite say that right, but I think you understand my point. Tripping over my own tongue at this point. I also didn't like the way the consultant broke down the response to housing. 48, 3% nothing said no housing, and 50% said something. That, to me, is kind of a leading interpretation. It's like saying, well, 43% of people prefer cats, but so many prefer dogs, and so many prefer birds, and so many prefer fish, so actually, cats are the least popular kind of pet, because we've taken all these other categories of housing and lumped them into one thing, and that makes it look like, you know, the, the no housing, AKA cats, is a minority position, and it's not. Another thing I wanted to say is, if, this is partly me checking whether or not I understand the consultant's interpretation of the multiple no housing questions, so if 55% said they're opposed to housing, and there's 30, and, and it's like a Venn diagram, so over here you have these people who said, answered no to this question, these people who answered no to this question, and the overlap was 38%, then that means outside of here you have 17% who said yes to one thing and no to the other thing, or, or answered differently, and then you have 5% over here, 43 minus 38, who answered no to one and not the other. So, I interpret that actually if, as 60% of Brisbane had some sort of negative response to the housing question, because you got the 38 who were harmoniously negative, and then 17% over here and 5% over there, and you add those up together and you get 60%. So, I mean, do you want to cherry pick the people who are consistent from the middle at 38%, or do you want to include everybody who had some sort of negative response and come up with 60%? So, I felt that was kind of, I would, I would have interpreted that differently, but I'm not a trained consultant, so, that's all I wanted to say for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. And the next slip I have is from Tom Hines.
Tom Hines, 28-year resident. I want to start again with a quote. This one is from Marshall McLuhan in the book, "The Medium is the Message." And I just happened to stumble across this book the other day, Friday, I think, in a classroom, and I just started thumbing through it, and I came across this, which is just apropos. He says, "The poet, the artist, the sleuth, whoever sharpens our perception tends to be antisocial. Rarely well-adjusted, he cannot go along with currents and trends. A strange bond often exists among antisocial types in their power to see environments as they really are. This need to interface, to confront environments with a certain antisocial power is manifest in the famous story, 'The Emperor Has New Clothes.' Well-adjusted courtiers, having vested interests, saw the emperor as beautifully appointed. The antisocial brat, unaccustomed to the old environment, clearly saw that the emperor ain't got nothing on. The new environment was clearly visible to him." And that's where I come in. I think the survey, the results are bogus. It's why we, our family did not respond to the survey. It was just bogus. Now, I wonder, one thing that I really want to caution you about is every, and I don't know if you have more than eight pages, put out to the public, only has eight pages, but on the back, way on the back in smaller print, it says 580 interviews. I was never interviewed, and 580 people out of the total number of registered voters in this city, which is 2,365, makes 580 interviews 24 and a half percent. Now, I'd like to kind of run through some of these other numbers here, because they're bogus too. Figure nine, for example, 66%. The total number of people that responded were actually 383. That's 16.2%, not 66. The other important thing that I really think you should take into account is every time the, this results mentions voters, strike that out and write in respondents. This was not a vote. This was not a ballot. We didn't vote. And we'll talk about voting, let's look at the numbers of people who will vote in this Tuesday election, and maybe take that as a baseline and see how 580 compares to that. Back on page two, I, I, some of these numbers don't work out. I know they don't add up because it's weighted. How's it weighted? Weighted towards housing? You know, 25 years ago, we said no housing out there, and you're still trying to put housing there. 25 years ago, we said no. Now you come up with surveys, can we have housing? Can we have housing? We said no! And the figure one and figure two, I don't get the difference. Perception of Brisbane's rate of development and perceived impact of growth and change. Isn't growth and change the same as development? Isn't growth and change the same as development? And there's no development happening right now. So what are we saying? It's too fast or too slow, or just right? Figure two, response to that, um... We were not given the fact that we're going to be impacted by our neighbors. Daly City's going to build housing. San Francisco's going to build housing. And we're going to be impacted by that. That's going to affect our rate of change and growth. Over our next page, three, figure three. Um, all of this stuff talks about development, development. Nobody's defined development, and we're not talking about scale, you know? Yeah, maybe we'll accept one to five hundred houses, but what's the scale? No one's mentioning that. Well, the other thing I don't like is where they aggregate, um, things like extremely important and very important. They were separate questions. Why are they lumped together in answers? You have to look at these as separate questions. And when extremely very important is forty-four percent, that's two hundred and fifty-five people. And out of the total voting population, that's ten percent, ten point eight percent. So don't get swayed by, um, you know, sixty-eight percent, you know, blah, blah, blah. These numbers are bogus. It's like looking at apples and oranges. At one hand, you're talking percentages. On the other hand, you're talking actual numbers of people. And please, strike out the word "voters" and write in "respondents," please. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see no, I don't have any other slips from the public. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak in regards to the survey? Colleen Mackin.
Thank you, Colleen Mackin. I just wanted to point out that when we ask on the survey a question about how much housing you feel is appropriate to include in any future Baylands development, and we're given these incremental choices, one to five hundred, five hundred to a thousand, and so on and so on. This question is really interesting because it's a bit subject to interpretation. When I first read it, because it doesn't say, well, you would have to change the general plan, and, and if you did, how much would you feel is appropriate? It says, "Given this." What does "given this" mean? So when I read it, I almost answered one to five hundred because I said, oh, that's where the general plan's changed. And I'm one of the people that put the survey on the counter and went back and I read this question probably ten times. I wasn't sure how to answer it. Tom Hines just pointed out a very important factor. Everything is relative to perspective and looking at a big picture. So if I said to you, we just did a housing element zoning in Parkside, on Park Lane, for two hundred and ninety-three houses. Now, how many houses would you be okay with in the Baylands? Someone that wrote five hundred might say, oh, no, 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 too many. Because then we're adding them up. And Tom just told us about housing in Daly City, San Francisco. I worked on the D E R. The total north of us projected is fifteen thousand. I understand from reading recently, South City is working on housing, twelve hundred to seventeen hundred. You have to add the cumulative effects. So again, I think it's really important. I went back to the U L I TAP report, and it says that people in Brisbane often contradict themselves because there's so much complexity to these issues. It's really hard. And where people said, oh, yes, they're, they're familiar with the Baylands. They've heard of the problems. They don't always know the intricacies. So depending on how you ask the question, if you say, well, it's going to be developed, how many houses would you be okay with? They'll answer it one way. If you say, do you want housing or not? They're going to say it another way. And throughout the survey, it talked about remediation and containment. Those can be two separate concepts. Containment, to me, can be, leave it alone. We don't have the technology yet. Remediation is, you're going to go in and clean it up, and Barbara pointed out, clean it up to what degree? Put in a clay cap, or you're going to really clean it for long term? We don't even know if we have the science to fully clean it. There's a recent federal study that is a proponent of nationwide that we start taking brownfield sites, leave them alone, and use them for energy generation. Wow, we're right on the page. Tiny Brisbane is in the forefront of what the federal government's recommending because they say some of the complexity of brownfield sites, it's too intricate. We don't know. Put energy generation on, make some money with it. Be conservative, wait. And as the price of solar panels goes down, which it's going to more so in the future, there's a chance to generate some tax dollars. We may have a transit hub there. We can generate some money. But also, what's interesting with this survey is when it talks about development, in my mind, development is we're going to build something. But it uses the term in this survey synonymous with parks and open space, which some people think of as no development. So I, I just want to suggest be very wary of how you extrapolate information because there's a lot of ways to do it from what's said here and the way this was crafted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we are sort of straying from the data to the project, so we should keep an eye on what the data was and how the survey is, is asking questions and whether it got the information. We were really, for the, the information we needed, not just looking for the results that we were trying to get. I think that we all really know that this isn't the blueprint for going forward for a project. So are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on the survey?
Hi, Greg Anderson, three forty-nine San Bruno. As you're well aware, I'm on the Planning Commission, so I'm going to try and stay away from anything that is close to deliberation. Um, but I did decide to come up here because I wanted to say that I was disappointed in the analysis of the survey. Um, there's a lot of data here that's not visible to us since we, for the purpose of anonymity, don't see the individual results. Um, but it would be possible and entirely useful to cross-correlate some of the items in the survey. For example, how many of the people who said they wanted one or more elements of housing have lived in Brisbane for less than five years? How many of them are outside of the eleven percent of the people who said they've heard anything at all about toxicity on the site? There's a number of different ways that you can cut this. You can make two-dimensional graphs. And then we'll have more information about the actual makeup of the people who have these different opinions. The presentation only showed us the numbers that we can read for ourselves. So I was disappointed in that. Thank you.
A good point and something I wouldn't have thought of. So are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Honorable City Council, Joel Diaz. Um, so, um, you know, the thing about surveys is they're supposed to be informative, and I think this one was. And I think a lot of people were looking forward to the results. I think, you know, the question we were all really seeking clarity on was housing. You know, how, how is the community going to receive housing? And, you know, was this survey going to make a clear distinction? You know, an actionable distinction? You know, how do we move forward? How do we advance this project? And, you know, it may be contrary to popular belief, but there, people want to advance this project. And, but we want to do it the right way. We don't want to kind of get into a long, protracted fight over something that maybe isn't even valid, a concern that's really not valid. And, you know, the survey kind of shows our interests, that commonality. You know, what is the commonality? What are our common interests? You know, some people see there's like two factions. There's the pro-growth, and then there's the anti-growth faction in town. And both, I would say that both factions are comprised of people with differing views. So it's not that everybody's just one-sided or one-way about any particular thing. And, you know, the, the survey, um, you know, as, as described here by the, by the analyst here, you know, says that there's this complicated view of housing, and it's sort of a fifty-fifty split. And you've got, you know, the way they got us thirty-eight percent versus thirty-six percent. But thirty-eight percent, zero housing. Thirty-six percent in favor of at least one home. So for me, that's not like very compelling. I mean, all this time, all this excitement, we're waiting for this big decision. And now I know, okay, at least, you know, half the population will approve one house. Well, we know one home isn't going to do it, right? And so I was hoping to see something that was, that had, that showed us a clearer distinction. I think, you know, that if you, if you look at figure seven on here where they show, they give you choices. They say the developer's proposing forty-four hundred homes. You know, forty-three percent said zero homes, fifteen percent said one to five hundred. Well, when we get to four thousand to five thousand homes, and under the context that developers proposing forty-four hundred homes, only two percent support that. Only two percent support the developer's plan for forty-four hundred homes. So that, for me, is very telling. It's, it means that we have to go back and revamp the developer's proposal. This is a big miss. And, you know, I recognize the need for housing. Um, it's, it's what entices the developer to develop. It's what makes it profitable. It's what, it's what gets us the other things that we want. And, you know, I think the, the reason why a lot of the city wants to do this stuff is we want, um, economic well-being. We want environmental well-being, you know? And in order to get that, it seems like the developer wants a lot of housing for them to do it. So, you know, it's, it's kind of disappointing to see it get to this stage where we know, I, for, for me, it's for sure, two percent is only, that's all that's going to approve forty-four hundred homes. So that's not going to happen. And the best results they can give us is fifty percent will approve at least one home. So it seems like we're nowhere. We didn't gain a whole lot. We know that people are, are very supportive of open space, of renewable energy, all these things. We kind of probably could have guessed that. So I think what this says to me is we need a total revamp. We need to, to, um, you know, look at some other number of housing, maybe, or some other development proposal.
I think we're, we're looking more at a project, you're discussing more of the project where we're supposed to be discussing the survey. So I, I don't want to go too much off-topic here.
Yeah, I apologize to you because I'm just kind of ad-libbing here too. So I, sorry about that. So I think it would have been an interesting question in the survey if we said, if there were two hundred acres of renewable energy, you know, how many homes would you approve then? And I think that would have been really an interesting question. You know, two hundred home, two hundred acres of renewable energy that generated, uh, five million in net revenue to the city. You know, how many homes would you approve then? And I think that what that kind of does is it shows those, those, um, those shared interests and that commonality, those kind of questions. Gets us on that path that we all, maybe all, all of us want to be on, is moving this project, you know, down the road in a positive way, in, in a viable way. So, so all in all, I think the, the, the survey was geared towards housing. I think they, they tried their best to slant it towards housing. And in the end, all we know is that nobody's going to support forty-four hundred homes, and half the population will only, you know, for sure, will support one, one house. And that's not very, um, useful, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so last call for the public to speak. Very briefly, Tom?
Tom Hines again. When the claim is one-half people would consider housing, the number of respondents to this survey was twenty-four and a half percent. Well, one-half of that is twelve point three percent. Not a very big number.
I think we should take the questions to the survey and look and see how we would like some other information taken from the survey. I, I agree with, I think, um, Greg Anderson that we can get a lot more information from the survey than we have received.
So moving on to council discussion, is there something that came out of the subcommittee that, that had heard this before that the subcommittee would like to comment on?
Well, I have a, just a general question. I think, uh, Mike, I think there's going to be an additional fuller report. Am I right about that? Or is this what we're going to get? Or what, what's the, what's the situation so far as your understanding of what, in addition, we might be expecting based on, you know, the contractual agreement?
Yeah, so we provided a, all the cross-table results, and a few people in the public commented about that. We provided that to staff. So there are the cross tabs where you can look at all the questions by age and gender and party and all sorts of things. So that, that information is available. We went through a, a more detailed draft presentation that included some of those breakouts by demographic groups. Um, and this is intended to be our, our final deliverable for the, for the project, though. The compilation of those things, plus the verbatim responses, actually, summarize those as well and provide them to the city.
Okay, so we do have all of that material?
We have all, all of the materials, yeah.
So how, how much material, I mean, how long is that and so forth?
The cross-table results stuff, if you print it all out, it's roughly a phone book.
Uh-huh.
Size roughly like that?
Uh-huh.
And that, and that goes through every question and breaks it out by the different demographic characteristics. And you can look at question, you know, question two by question three kind of stuff in this, in the results as well.
Okay. So I guess the question becomes, maybe this is for, for staff, how are we going to make that available to the public?
Or are we going to make that available?
Well, I assume we are. It's a public document.
It's all public information. Uh, we were trying to sort of, and actually, we had started just with the open-ended responses, which is another set of sort of information. We're trying to figure out a way to, um, figure out if there's a more user-friendly way. And I haven't had a chance to talk to the consultant about what these cross tabs in particular, because as you say, trying to maybe work through a phone book worth of data is, from our own website, is challenging. And again, the value added, we're trying to create some value added for the, for the public and someone who'd be interested in actually gleaning information out of there. There's always a conversation we haven't had the opportunity to have with the consultant.
Mm-hmm. So I guess, um, my suggestion is that, that we sort of have that conversation, and maybe we can, uh, you know, report it out at the next council meeting or something as to how we're going to deal with that. Because I think there obviously are a few people who would kind of like to dig into that. But obviously, you're right, just putting the whole thing up on the website is not very useful. So we've got to probably find some way to, to get access, but not just, you know, dump it all in a, you know, totally unorganized.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually, you know, a series of, we could do it as a series of PDFs, and someone could download them. It's not that problematic. I mean, I would say that it's extraordinarily rare for a government agency to provide the cross-table results surveys, but it's not
Right.
entirely unheard of. So you could
Right.
make them available on your website.
Okay, so we'll just have to sort of figure out what's the best way to do that, you know? And maybe you all can decide and then, you know, have a conversation, and then we can have a report on the next council meeting. Does that sound? Sound okay?
And, John, what I'm assuming that we talked about is that, that we do have some of, in the presentation, we have some of the comments, the open-ended comments that, that were put into this presentation, but we don't have a compress, comprehensive list of those comments? Is that something that can be made available to the subcommittee and ourselves and perhaps the public?
Absolutely, and that's one of those pieces of information that we're just actually scrubbing now, we had questions on some of the, the details, we're going to talk to the consultants. And again, as a matter of putting it in a, there's, it's, there's certain codes that are built into the data that probably, we'd like to make sure the codes are real clear what the comment was referring to and what question was being answered, so it's a little more user-friendly. That's something we're doing right now.
As I, as I recall, there was only a couple places for, for comments in the survey.
I think there were like three or something like that, but yeah, there was, there was a pretty long Excel file that we have all the comments in, and that's what he's referring to.
Okay, okay.
Just trying to figure out a way to make it a little digestible, but yeah, that's easy enough to provide.
So, yeah. I have one other question.
I don't know if you wanted the subcommittee to keep going, or?
Oh, no, no, I just.
Yeah.
Was touching on that same comment.
These are all things that we've, you know, we've talked about in the subcommittee. So, in terms of explanation, methodology, so, you know, you made the statement that, you know, it's a pretty good return and also the, the margin of error and so forth, so would you explain your thinking about, you know, what do you mean by pretty good return and, you know, how effectively does this represent the population of Brisbane? What's the statistical thinking about that? So you can give a sense of, of how likely these are representative of all the, you know, people living in Brisbane?
Sure. Once you start getting close to about six hundred interviews, the margin of sampling error for any population, whether it be the city of Brisbane or the state of California, the margin of sampling error is the same, right around three and a half percent. So, that we, there's been some comments about that, but you can conduct six hundred interviews statewide, six hundred interviews here, and we got to five hundred eighty, the margin of error, plus or minus a couple tenths of a percent is going to be about the same. So in terms of.
So, for instance, you know, like, like the forty-three percent that want zero housing, it could actually be in terms of, if you were able to ask everybody, it could actually be either, likely to be about ninety-five percent probability, forty percent, or forty-six percent.
And technically, it means that if you ask that same question a hundred times.
Right.
Ninety-five percent of the time, it would be within plus or minus three point five percent of that result.
Right, three point five percent.
Yeah.
So that gives you a range or?
Yeah, it's not exactly a bell curve, but it gives you, it's, we use a ninety-five percent confidence interval for, for calculating our margins of sampling error. Yeah, so essentially, do a hundred times, ninety-five percent of the time is within that range. But you're right, it could be a few points higher, a few points lower.
Right, okay.
Okay, sorry. Just wanted to make that clear.
And Curtis, you know, some of the questions that were asked in regards to, you know, the demographics and breaking it down.
Sure.
More, is it possible to provide that information where it's not in the phone book range, but something that's, you know, gets to the heart of, of what some of the public has asked for, in a more manageable fashion?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's the top-line results, which go through all the questions and give the responses, and at the back of that, we had the demographic questions, and that's easy enough to provide, and I think we probably already have provided that to, to the city, and that's a concise way of looking at the demographics, so some of its comfort level will be higher enough that, you know, in terms of ethnicity and age and, and gender, that there was a representative of the voting population.
Income?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, like, party affiliation?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And I think, how long you lived in the city as well.
Okay, good, because I think that's important information that.
Yeah, and, and those are available in the cross tabs too, so you can look at all the questions by those different categories, which I think someone in the audience suggested would be interesting to look at, yes.
All right. And I'm just curious, you know, is that something that we could put on, say, the cloud and people can just go to a link and then access it from there, John?
Well, that's already, what Kurt's talking about is already online.
It's already online, so.
Yeah, it's the back end of the survey in terms of the demographics and education and income and all those. I think the, the cross-tabbing issue is the one that's more.
It's different, yeah.
That's a different question.
Right.
And I guess, you know, if, if the council, certainly there's the idea of the, all that data's there, but if there's certain sort of combinations of data that you're more interested in having more, made more readily available, that's kind of part of the conversation. If you want to give some direction to us, if there's certain kind of ways to slice that data you're more interested in making more readily available, the problem is when we start picking and choosing how to cross-tab that data and present, because it's all there, I don't want, we, we're not in a position of choosing what's important for the community to see or know in a more highlighted fashion, that's the difficulty.
Okay, all right. There are some that you've kind of pulled out, though, Kurt.
Yeah, I mean, given the, the questions here and the discussion, and I feel like there's some skepticism with the way we analyze the results here, so I think it might be in your best interest if we just took the entire cross tabs, put them on your website, and anyone could look at them through all the different lenses and, and come to your own conclusions. So I think that's, you know, if you're able to put that up on the website, just, it's a series of PDFs because we slice and dice it several different ways, but it lets you look through the data in a, in a variety of different ways, through those different demographic questions that you were highlighting.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, just, you know, I like this presentation, and it'd be great to have the presentation easily accessible to the public, but I'd also like to have some of that information that was shown to the subcommittee, you know, be included.
Yeah, so, I mean, the cross tabs have everything, you have everything you can, every little way you can slice stuff up, so.
All right. That's it for questions, I, I'm ready to discuss if.
Well, you know what, actually, thank you, Kurt. Got some interesting comments, you know, I thought, you know, thinking about it, you know, because I'd thought about this as, you know, reading through the data before, before the meeting. We ask, try to ask simple questions, but the answers are very complex on the question, you know, like, example is, question seventeen, we ask about, what's the best way to deal with the existing contamination? And sixty-six percent responded, I feel the best way to deal with it is to take some of the funds generated by the development, put them towards containment, containment and remediation, and I think some of the folks kind of brought that up. But this is just as an example, is, that's really, there's a lot of detail that would go into something like that, you know, go into exactly what does that mean? You know what I mean? It's like, give you an example, years ago when we voted on high-speed rail, you go, did you support a high-speed rail and train in, from San Francisco to Los Angeles? Probably, probably, everybody in this room voted yes. Sure, support the concept. But when you get into the level of details, exactly what that means, there's a total different meaning. And so, what are we going to extrapolate from this? Ask a simple question, but we know there's a level of detail that, exactly what does that mean? You know what I mean? It's like, whose funds? What funds? Is it, do you put the cart before the horse? How do you clean up something with funds generated? You build it first? You, you know what I mean? And, and, I mean, we ask the question like that, and, you know, people would think, you build it first and then clean it up? How, how would that work? You know, I mean, you, you know, maybe there's, you know, answers to that, but you ask a simple question, the simple answer is like, well, okay, yeah, sure, I would support that, you know? But then you start looking at the details, well, how do you do that exactly? How, how are those funds generated? Whose funds? Because the developer's the one that's responsible for it, not the city. So, you know, is it his funds? The developer's funds? You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of detail, and I'm just using this as an example because it's kind of throughout the document, where do we want to go next? Because I think this is kind of like a beginning step of getting general useful information, you know, but not totally specific information, because as we start boiling down, going through the EIR, you know, it's like, where are we going to end up with this? You know, because to me, I mean, ultimately, we've talked about sending final, final results of a project, presumably approved by the city council to the voters to be ratified, but exactly what is that going to be and how that's going to come together, you know, is, is really a difficult process, because there's so much information that would go into that. And so this is, we're kind of just getting a general feel, do you support high-speed rail? And that, and that's what I kind of look at, what this survey is, 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 do you support high-speed rail? We're not really boiled down into details. And that's just more of a comment that, that I have on it, so. So I, I can, you know, understand how the, the public may feel frustrated by putting a survey out that asks questions like this, is, you know, and I'm looking, and I'm talking about just looking at it back in, in retrospect, because, you know, we, we all approved the survey. We've all read it and, and went through it, and so, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's not this guy, it's us. So, he's the messenger, and so, you know, and it, and, and dealing with it, you know, it's just a ten-thousand, five-thousand-foot level question-asking survey, and that, and that's really what it is. And I, I think, I think there's a lot more information that, you know, that we're going to have to extrapolate and eventually get out to where we land on this, and it's certainly going to be a public process, so.
So, did you want to make a comment, Lori, or?
Yeah, I agree with Clark that it's, you know, that the questions are simple, but the answers are complex. And I think the questions on the housing really showed that, you know, that the voters didn't really want to be pigeonholed into a yes or no on the housing question, that there's really different, you know, variants that are, that need to be considered, and, you know, when I was answering the survey myself, I, you know, I found myself wanting to go back to that yes or no question once I had read the questions that followed about, you know, well, if you answer no, then why don't you want housing? And if you answered yes, then why do you want, why do you support housing? And I, I found it very difficult for myself to, to want to answer only one of those two following questions. I wanted to answer both. And I think a lot of people felt that way, so, you know, I'm, I'm glad that the survey broke it down into, you know, what different amounts of housing would you support? But I think there needs to be even further analysis that, that shows why do you support some housing, why don't you support any, why do you support, you know, both sides of the issue? It's, it's not a yes or no. There's more than two sides to this coin, and it's a complex issue. I also found number four very interesting, that talks about whether you think Brisbane's changing too fast, or you're, we're maintaining the small-town character, or whether change is coming too slow, and I was, I was happy to see that fifty-one percent, the majority of the respondents said that we're maintaining our small-town character even as we change and grow as a community. And I think that's important not only for the Baylands process, but, you know, any short-term and near-term projects like the Parkside specific plan that we're looking at. And I think that these results are going to be useful for that plan as well, and it informs, you know, that informs us as to the, the communities feel that, at least the majority of people feel that we, we can make some changes and improvements to our town and maintain our small-town character. So that was an important affirmation of the, of the community's feeling on that matter. That's all I have at this point.
So, in a follow-up to that, I would go with one of the speakers from the audience that said that right now on the ground, we have very little development going on right now, and there's not much that is visible in regards to what was asked in the survey. So, I, I think that it doesn't really say that it's an affirmation of growth, or as something that is affirmative on either direction, because they were talking about, you know, right now, are we growing at the right rate? And we aren't really growing much. We have a lot of things that are on hold and in, but we haven't really done any on-the-ground growth, so I'm not quite sure that number shows that. And, to me, several of the questions, although I did get to weigh in a little bit on them, there was, many of the questions were somewhat leading, and, and I'll bring one suggestion, would you replace, you know, if we could use the money to replace the old library? Well, that was a derogatory term. Let's call it the old library, not just call it to build a new library. Why comment that we want to replace the old library? It makes the questions leading. And many of the questions that I saw in here were asked in a leading way, to get a specific, it felt to me that they were looking for, and we'll go back to the, the question of housing, well, if we have to have some, how many do you want? And it wasn't a question of, you know, if and/or, you were sort of pigeonholed into not trying to be an extreme person, so that gave you, gave the response of one or more. And so, I think that all these questions need, and answers, need to be looked at with a lot more interpretive, you know, it's not that fifty percent of the people approve of one thing or another, it was how the questions were asked and how you get a response, so. It's a good tool.
It is, it is a good tool. I, I think you hit it right on the head there, Clark, that is, it is a general, you know, approach to get the, the community's pulse. We did dive a little deeper into housing because that's the number-one issue, and, you know, with the Baylands and the community. But also, like you're saying, Clark, you know, we, we as a council saw the questions and we made some changes. We could have made more changes if we really felt that we needed to make changes to make the survey better, and I think we felt that it was. Sometimes, though, then you, you send something out and you realize, okay, maybe we didn't do as good a job as we could have. And, but this is, this is the first one, and we'll have others. And as we move farther along in the process, we'll, we'll refine the questions and get more into the details. But, you know, some, some things were very valuable, you know, that, that helped me as a council member dealing with, with the public. It was nice to see that ninety-one percent of people have engaged local government. I mean, that, that percentage is through the roof. You'd never find that, or hardly ever find that anywhere in any other city. We had eighty-nine percent of people heard about the Baylands project, and I think that that's great. And that shows that, that we are engaged as a community and that we're paying attention. Some are paying more attention than others, of course, and we know that, that, you know, from anyone. Some are paying more attention than others, of course, and we know that, you know, from anyone. And then there was over 78 percent think we should be proactive, that we should engage the developer. And that is one percentage that I'm glad to see, because whatever happens out in the Baylands, we have to work together. It has to be the developer, it has to be the community, you know, working out its differences. What UPC has proposed and what we've proposed, there, some things are in sync and some things are not. And it's the process of getting through it and ultimately, in the end, having a development agreement that hammers out the final arrangement before then going before the public. So, I think this is a good first step, and looking forward to getting more information from the public and engaging the public.
Yeah, I guess the only additional comment that I have has to do with the usefulness of the survey information for the planning commission. Because, you know, at least three commissioners are here, and that's one bit of the information that was to be provided to them to help them in their deliberations. And so, I guess at some point, and I guess this is my suggestion to the planning commission and the planning director, that, you know, there needs to be some kind of conversation at the commission level as to, okay, so, what can we tease out of this that really helps us in our deliberations? Certainly, it's going to be beyond the basic raw material. It's going to be some of the cross tabs and some of the other thinking about it, and even what is it that we didn't really find out yet that we need to know? So, there are, you know, a variety of ways of analyzing this information, what we can get from what we've got already and what we need to have to help us down the road. And so, I also think it's a good first start, and, you know, it's not perfect. None of these things are perfect, but I think it really, you know, gets us along the way to giving, giving us some information as to, you know, the perceptions of people on these matters. And I think that's a valuable first stage. And I think now we kind of turn it over to the planning commission to really dig into it at greater depth and to use it as the best they can, and also to inform the planning director and the council, okay, so what more do we need in order to get a sense of the pulse of the public? So, we're, you know, we're going to be consistent with them, because as we all know, and, you know, at the end of the road, when something comes, particularly when we say, okay, we need to change the general plan in this way and that way, that goes to the public for a vote. And, you know, then you got the actual people voting, you know, by mail or at the community center, saying, okay, we're going to go with this or we're not going to go with that. And when you get to that point, it sure would be good to have a sense of what you're proposing to them is what they're likely to approve. Because you don't want to waste everybody's time. So, I don't know if there's generated any more questions from the public. Not for Tom.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Or I think that we've all sort of feel that we've surveyed the survey to death, and at least we can look at the numbers and get an idea of what the answers mean to us.
That's right, it's up to interpretation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I have a motion to adjourn.
Same as...
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.